County Council is now in session. The Honorable Chad Williams will do the invocation, pledge of allegiance.
Everybody seemed to read my mind this time. God, thank you for the many blessings you've given to our great county. Please be with us tonight as we try to figure out how to best utilize them. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is oath of office. Joshua Bacchus, if you would come forward. There he is.
I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified at point of the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office to which I have been appointed and that I will, to the best of my ability, discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and the United States.
Josh?
Thank you for your service. I appreciate it.
Big thank you.
You've got to make sure my big man.
Okay. First person to make an appearance is Melissa Thomas. Yes ma'am, can you come on forward and just name and address?
Melissa Thomas, 904 Sierra Road, York, South Carolina, 29745. I had passed a package to all of you to, at your leisure, take home with you. You have it up there. Karen sent it up there for you. That encloses most of what I'm going to talk about so that you can take it home, study it at your leisure. On June the 2nd of 2014, I let a gentleman take two miniature horses in a purchase agreement with the conditions that he could not sell the horses, give them away, lease them out, loan them out, under any conditions. If he couldn't care for them, they were to come back to me. That was on June the 2nd. I kept a close eye on him until March. I had some family things come up. I was unable to check on him, but he had done well to that day. On May the 8th, at 12:11 a.m., a call came in from the Emergency Management Office of Public Safety that there was a pony on the side of the road on Turkey Creek Road. Officer Palmer was dispatched at 12:14 and arrived on scene at 1:01, where the vet technician, Mandy Sandifer, was on the side of the road with my pony on a lead rope not 100 feet from the gate where the pony belonged. Mandy Sandifer and Officer Palmer both said they did not know who owned the pony, which is amazing because Mandy Sandifer's property abuts this property, and for the prior 10 months, she had been looking at those ponies and their pasture. Now, they are miniature horses, but Animal Control has repeatedly called them ponies, so that's the terminology that I will use. They called this person who has, does the pickup for the county. She came out. You have a letter in there that was given to Eric Rickert back in May stating that Mandy Sandifer smelled of alcohol, and she told them, you know, "Have you knocked on doors?" They said, yes, they had, at 1:30 in the morning, and no one knew who the pony belonged to. The following afternoon, still May the 8th, a call was made from Animal Control with the complaint, and Officer Palmer went out to the property. Now, the gate on the property is chained. It does have a lock on it. And he proceeded to go over the fence, onto the property, look at all of the animals there. The animals, he said, there was two, a brown horse and a brown pony that needed to have a little weight put on, and a thin brown pony that really, a white pony that really needed weight. That is in his report. But tin pigs that looked fine and healthy. This was at 2:46 in the afternoon. He completed after coercing this gentleman to sign over only those two miniature horses, the ponies, to him at 11:43 p.m. So he stayed on the property for more than seven hours convincing the man to sign over only these two ponies. On May the 9th, Jenna Mullenax attended a fundraiser for a group called CERA, C-E-R-A, in Wingate, North Carolina. That stands for Carolina Equine Rescue and Assistance, and she approved them as a rescue group that could take horses from York County Animal Control. On May the 9th, the gentleman who had my ponies filed a police report that he was a victim of a burglary that occurred sometime during the time that my pony got out of his pasture and on the road, and someone had broken into his home and taken $4,400 in cash. On May the 13th, 2015, the two ponies were listed on a euthanasia list with dogs and could only be rescued from Animal Control, from an approved 501(c) nonprofit. By 15, on May the 15th, the two ponies were removed from the holding facility that has been used for the last 12 years with no issue at all, with no apparent reason, and they were transferred to Mandy Sandifer's property that abuts the property where they were. On May the 17th, I received a notice from a nonprofit agency asking me if I could take those two ponies. I looked at the pictures and I said, "Of course I can. They actually belong to me." No problem. This was a Sunday night at 6:30 p.m. On May the 18th, I was at Animal Control Office. I was there at 8:15 a.m. I told the receptionist why I was there, asked to speak with Steve Stuber. She said he was in a meeting. He would be out momentarily. Would I please wait? I waited until 8:58. At 8:58, I told her, "I'm going back to the back to sign for my ponies, and he can discuss ownership with me at that time." He came out of, out from the conference room with Officer Palmer. He asked me into his office. I sat there with him proving my ownership until 9:38, at which time he deigned to check the status of the ponies and told me that they had been adopted, and he didn't know when. It could have been weeks ago. Well, they had only been in Animal Control custody for nine days, and I know that when he pulled the screen up, it said "adopted" at 9 o'clock because I have the copy of that report. On May the 19th, I went to the Office of Public Works and met with Eric Rickert. I told him, "Here's a copy of my contract," allowed him to make a copy of it, showed him pictures of the horses that were left behind, and asked for his help. We're only on, you know, just a couple of days in here. We could still get my ponies back. He said he would. He would call me back later that day. He never called back. I called him on the 20th, and he said he could not help me. So I then went to Judge Lynn Benfield. I spoke with her. She looked at my contract, and she said, "Yes, those horses, those ponies belong to you." I said, "Yes, ma'am." She made a call to Steve Stuber. She made a call to the county attorney. She made a call to Eric Rickert. They asked for documents showing where I originally got the ponies. She asked, they asked for documents showing vet records. They asked for copies of my contracts, which I provided them, and Judge Benfield then faxed them over to all of them. So they have copies of that, and I'll be happy to get them to you if you would like to see those. That was the 21st is when they asked for all the documentation, and I sent it to them. On May the 22nd, Judge Benfield told me that she works for the county, and she could not help me or give me legal advice, that I should hire an attorney, and I told her, "Thank you very much. I'm most grateful for everything that you did, on even making a phone call on my behalf." And when I left her office, I went and spoke to Officer Williams at the Sheriff's Department, who told me this was a civil matter, and there was nothing he could do. On May the 25th, I called to speak with the county attorney's office, and because I had carbon copied my attorney on the FOIA, they would not speak with me. So I did retain an attorney at that time for this matter. He called and got the name of the rescue group. I called, I told this woman that I would give her her adoption fee of $400 per pony plus a $1,000 donation to get my ponies back. She hung up on me. She has yet to return a phone call from my attorney. On June the 3rd, my attorney sent a letter to Emily Brown requesting to know why the FOIA was incomplete, as it did not contain a vet intake sheet. It did not contain a copy of a negative Coggins or a health certificate that is necessary to send a horse across state lines. There was no reply in writing from Ms. Brown, although she requested that my attorney put everything in writing. Since that time, I have spent four months investigating things with Animal Control. A horse owner on Param Road, there was a call made, complaint starving horses. Officer Jonathan Mitchell and Officer Jenna Mullenax both trespassed on this man's property using the premise of curtilage and open field policy, which is a good thing to say, but your Fourth Amendment right guarantees you the right to privacy on your property. Curtilage can only be used by law enforcement. Our animal control officers are not law enforcement officers. We do not have a Class 1 certified officer. Curtilage is defined, I put it in your paper for you in the back, that curtilage is defined, and the considerations that have been set by the Supreme Court of the United States are that are all utilities, water, sewer, electricity, monitored by meters located in front of the home and/or on the side of the home. Two, is mail delivered to one mailbox, and is it located at that property? Are there separate street numbers or letters designating that a barn or a house or living quarters are separate from the primary home? Whether the thing is within or used for the home? What steps, if any, the resident took to protect the thing from observation or access by people? Is it fenced in completely? And the answer to all those questions on the property on Param Road is yes. Officer Mitchell climbed over a locked and chained gate, went around the property, took pictures of the horses, the water, and everything else, and then taped a warning ticket onto the barn of the property. Jenna Mullenax did the same thing. They said that they have an open field policy just as DNR. Well, DNR officers are required to be Class 1 certified officers, and they go and/or law enforcement at their own expense. Our animal control officers are not. It does not apply. The Constitution of this state and the Constitution of the United States says that no government agency may go on private property for any reason if it's not law enforcement, and then only with a warrant or owner's consent unless there is an extant reason. That means that someone is in dire straits, going to die, or there's an active investigation by law enforcement. I have documentation to back up everything that I'm telling you. I have not included in this. I do have the originals, and I will be happy to make it available to you. I do not understand why now, after all these years, these are the pictures that Animal Control took of my two ponies. The one on the left is Dusty. He is a four-year-old Appaloosa miniature horse. The horse on the right is Sugar. They have her listed as a six-year-old female. This mare is 22 years old. She is 22 years old. She has had a lot of babies, and that's why she had been rescued and came to live at my farm. If you could go to the next, oh, how do I do that?
On the side, you need to turn it on.
On? Okay. Maybe. See, I am technologically not savvy. Let me go dig in the trenches. I'm much better. Okay. All right. Okay. Okay. Thank you. All right. These are better, these are very photoshopped. If you look, the horse on the left, that is Sugar. That pony, her head looks excessively large for her body, and her neck is excessively long. The one on the right is also photoshopped, where they've shortened the neck and made the head very much larger. And this is, this is the pictures that are photoshopped by someone at Animal Control, apparently photoshopped by someone at Animal Control. I do have that. These are actually pictures of the horses nine days after, when Animal Control, this is May the 15th, Animal Control was moving them from the holding facility that they have used for the last 12 years with no issues to Mandy Sandifer's house. This, this is Sugar. Both of those pictures, that's Sugar, and she looks nothing like the picture that you just saw of her, so thin and skinny. And there again, on the left is Sugar, on the right is Dusty and Sugar, and you have blowups of those pictures where you can look at them at your leisure. This on the left is Dusty. That looks nothing like the little guy they had a picture of on Pet Harbor. And why anyone who knows anything about horses would loop a rope around their neck that will tighten to pull them onto a trailer is beyond me. This is Dusty and Sugar again, so you can see from the rear end and the side, they are nowhere near in the condition that was portrayed by the pictures put on Pet Harbor. And these are taken from, these are screenshots from a video that I have of the animals actually being moved from the holding facility at Animal Control. These are the horses that were left. These are the horses that they said needed to put on a little bit of weight. Now, these are pictures of pictures, the pictures you have in your, in your package are much better. The horse on the left is a foal that is less than a year old. You can see hip bones. It is definitely wormy. It had only been on the property for three weeks. He had taken it in trying to help the previous owner put some weight on it. The horse on the right is an elderly horse with issues. So this is another picture, the backside of, of the little guy that they left behind. This is also another, you can see all of the vertebrae on his back, and he was left, but they took the two white ponies. My question, why? There again is the same two that are left, and they took mine. There again is that one. I don't understand why something like this could happen because apparently someone has an agenda, and apparently there's no one overseeing what goes on at Animal Control. I do not understand why we are paying the salary. I'm a citizen. I pay my taxes. I'm a business owner. I have a very good business and have owned it for many years here in York County. I pay taxes. I shop in York. And yet we pay a salary of a vet who cannot or will not pull a Coggins on a horse and cannot or will not do a health certificate to send it across state lines to stay within the state laws of both states, South Carolina and North Carolina, Georgia, Alabama, any state you go to, you're required to transport a horse over state lines to have a health certificate saying it is leaving this facility and going to this facility. But yet, our vet doesn't do that. Now, when these horses were taken, because they did go back two weeks later and take them from the gentleman, because I had raised a very big fuss, they were not taken to the facility where we, as citizens of York County, have paid $5 per day to care for livestock that is taken in. $5 per day. They were not taken there. They were taken to Palmetto Veterinary Hospital, where we, as taxpayers, paid $97 per day per horse. My question is why? Why has York County Animal Shelter now decided that only, only nonprofits can pick up animals on the rescue list? You have to be an approved, and the people who approve you are Jenna Mullenax, Steve Stuber, Sonia McCarthy. They approve the nonprofits that can pull. Why? I might want a dog. I have the funds that if there is a dog who is heartworm positive, who is sick, injured, I have the funds to care for that dog, and as a citizen, because my tax dollars pay their salaries, I should be allowed to pick and choose before nonprofit. I don't understand what has happened. We used to have someone who worked as a volunteer with Animal Control, who was very qualified to determine whether an animal was dangerous. That person can no longer volunteer at York Animal Control. So who is the person who determines that? I don't know, because I don't, and I'd like to know their qualifications. Jenna Mullenax has been promoted to the supervisor of Animal Control Officers. What are her qualifications? I don't understand. Owning a horse does not qualify her to know how to perform a Henneke body score, to see what the body score of a horse is. We have a vet who does not go out and perform this. She performs them from pictures, which is impossible to do. You must put hands on a horse in order to body score them. Why do we have animals leaving the shelter not spayed or neutered with no rabies vaccines and going to nonprofits, and no funds are paid to Animal Control? So there's no money coming in because everything goes to nonprofits? I don't understand. Why is the vet technician doing euthanasias? According to the laws of this great state of South Carolina, the South Carolina Code of Law 473420 gives you the allowable forms of euthanasia and who may do it. And it must be a licensed vet, or it must be someone who has been trained and certified to perform euthanasias. And if we have someone other than our vet at Animal Control, I would like to know. I would like to know who it is, where their certification is, because it must be renewed. I think it's every two years. Don't, I'm not positive. I believe that's every two years. Steve Stuber, I understand, will be leaving Animal Control effective December 1. I would like to know who his replacement is, what are their qualifications, and who recommended I would also like to know why our Animal Control Officers are now carrying badges, if it is, if this is another means and method after the display that they had of intimidating. The man who had my ponies was told that the Animal Control Officer would take him to jail. He would write him a ticket. He will have to surrender the animals for him to leave. So is a badge another form, method? I don't know. I'm asking the question. The gentleman that had the horses on, he had horses on Param Road, was written the ticket eventually on June 25th, and had, or he had a court date of June the 25th, and Animal Control proceeded to come out two more times and cross the fence when no one was home to investigate the property. As far as I understand, once that ticket is wrote and you have a court date, they have no other reason to come out there. He was given 48 hours to comply. He did his best. It used to be, and I will say this, for seven years, when this Animal Control was under the umbrella of the Sheriff's Department, and judges signed over the horses after they were leaving the county, I took them in. I paid out of my pocket more than $50,000 to care for animals, and I am not a nonprofit. I am concerned with the direction that they're going, where they think they are law enforcement, and they are not. I hope that you will take the time to read the package that I've put together. I also have a letter in there that I believe Eric Rickert has from the pickup person, and I'm not naming private citizens, but I am naming those who are in public office. He has had that letter since May, and I will be happy to share with you any of the documentations to back up. All you have to do is request that I send you a copy. I can do it electronically. You have my email address, my phone number, my cellphone number, and I am very, very concerned about the going zone, especially when they take two ponies who, with the pictures you can look at, are not in bad shape. When you look at a picture that's not photoshopped, that is a screenshot from the video versus what they left. Why? If it, apparently someone had an agenda. Now, I would like to recognize everyone who paid here tonight because of their concerns for Animal Control. If you could just stand up, please, and be recognized, raise your hand. These people are concerned about the going zone. Thank you very much. I appreciate the support. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. Is there anything that else you need from me other than the packets and the information that I've provided?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Next person is Deborah Parish. And be sure to give name and address.
Sure. Hi. Good evening. Deborah Parish. I live in Charlotte, 5215 Berkeley View Circle, Charlotte, North Carolina. And I am here. Do I? Yes. Excuse me. I was late. I wasn't. In any case, I am a coonhound and beagle rescue person and have been for about 25 years. I'm relatively new to the area. In this particular situation, I received a tip from a fellow rescue person having to do with a situation on Lake Wiley involving eight neglected beagles being cared for in horrendous conditions. There were, in fact, nine beagles at the time. I visited the property, thank you, back in the first week of May. So we are now four months later, and I'm here to tell you that the beagles are in no better position today. There were nine beagles at the time. The owner of these dogs does not live on the property, nor is he there every day. There is also no running water on the property. It's a construction site. At the time, as I said, back in May, there were nine adults. Within the first week, I discovered a litter of puppies. And shortly thereafter, as in one day, a second litter of puppies. There were eight surviving puppies from two litters. Now, I should mention that a typical beagle has between six and seven puppies per litter. So these are overbred beagles, maybe a little older. Let's say they each had five. We had dead, we had two dead beagles, one that I removed back in early May. Animal Control was made aware of the situation. And in fact, on May 10th, they visited the property. I was present, the owner was present, the owner of beagles. The sheriff sent two deputies out, and they inspected the property. And I was told at the time that the owner was given until May 18th. So at that point, a little over a week, to come into compliance. I did not understand that. Officer Palmer talked me through why that was, why the owner should be given the time to come into compliance. Today, I'm going to fast forward. Today, it's still a construction site. There is still no running water. There is a water pump that has worked all of five days over four months. There's a trailer with somebody living in it, with no running water on the property. So when the owner is not there, he doesn't make provisions for anybody else to take care of the beagles, nobody has access to fresh water, running water. And today, there are five or six adults. There was one beagle that went missing about a month ago, adult beagle. There's a second beagle that may be missing, although I'm not sure if Animal Control picked it up last week when I called them. A neighbor called, and then I called. There were loose dogs. Puppies were loose, and the little female was loose. That little female is missing. I have no way to determine if Animal Control picked up that dog. There were two litters of puppies born, two, back in early July. Today, there are two puppies. There's one dead litter, and only two surviving puppies from a second litter. And I should point out that back in early July, I called, when I discovered that there were, there was a new litter and a second litter, I called Animal Control, made them aware, because conditions on the property were no better then. And they came out, and I was told afterwards, I said, "Did you see the puppies?" And Officer Palmer said to me, "I didn't see no puppies." I said, "Did you look in the box?" You know, at three and a half weeks, they're not going to be crawling around in, in the, you know, on the ground. And he repeated, he saw no puppies. I'm here to tell you, there were puppies there. Everything I am saying, by the way, I have documentation. So today, we have two puppies and at least 10 dead dogs. And the rest is, I am not, most of my rescue work doesn't involve work with Animal Control and getting so heavily involved in laws and ordinances. They're appropriate here. They're, you know, obviously, there's a place for it. But I don't want to lose sight of the bigger picture here. We have a condition that has existed for four months. We have neighbors who have called, we have me who has called, I've offered documentation, and nothing has been done. As recently as this weekend, nothing has been done. At the time I first visited, oh, and I should point out that at the time I first went, there was already an open case or investigation. They, the dogs were either in these constructed, whatever, shelters and boxes out in the full sun, and that includes the females, which in part may explain why puppies died. They were chained to those boxes, and they did not have water or food. And I was there multiple times. So on occasion, they would have water, or occasion, there would be water, but it wouldn't be accessible sometimes. There was no water. Fast forward to today, and in the interim, there's still tethering, if you just look at the laws and the ordinances. There are tethering violations. I can, I will show you some pictures. Oh, actually, I've got two of the dogs there right now. That was early August. That dog, that little female, was chained to a tree for at least three days. On the first day that I visited, she was so tangled around, she couldn't move. And by the way, there was no food, and the water bucket was dirty, not that she could reach it. I untangled her, came back two days later, and she was still chained to that tree and could not reach the water and had no food and no shelter. Oh, there's no, there's no box there for her. The second female was also that same week. She was tied, you know, this doesn't present very well, but she was tied by a rope, doesn't sound so bad, to a heavy beam. She couldn't move more than 18 to 24 inches. And her food must have been 20 feet, 25 feet down the, down the way. We, I had to untangle her from those heavy metal beams, and she finally got some food. So there are, oh, and there's the 10-foot law ordinance having to do with the length of the, from the, from the trolley to the dog, number of the dogs today or over the weekend. Did not meet that criteria. And you're, I'm going to say this again, more than once. I've called Animal Control. I have been told that when they visit, they find the owner in compliance, that Animal Control does not see the situation, as I do. I have hundreds of photographs, all time and date stamped. And it's been suggested that I'm not a credible witness to this situation by virtue of the fact that what I see is different than what Animal Control sees. And I can point out four examples of times that Animal Control has been called, and there's been a delay in their getting there, and in the interim, somebody has contacted the owner. And the owner has come out and made remedy to the situation, made it look okay. So the reports that were filed do say he was in compliance, when 12 hours previously, that dog was chained. And that's not the only one. Oh, boy. Back then, I mean, there's feces everywhere, old feces, new feces. The owner obviously knows to clean up, because the females are down now, and they were back then, for the most part, in kennels. Initially, they were tied to their boxes when, within a kennel, and the males are on a different parcel of, a different parcel in the same general area. He knows to clean up, because the area around the males is perfectly clean. Area around the females is filthy, and that's where the puppies are. They're covered in fleas. I see empty bottles of some kind of flea and tick spray. I don't see that many ticks, but those poor dogs are miserable. There's going to be a picture of this poor female. She's sick. I don't know what she's got. I don't know if she's laid heartworm. I don't know. I'm not a vet. But I'm here to tell you, that dog is sick. She was sick back in May, and she's sicker today. I have multiple photos of her. The small male in the middle, I'm concerned about as well. He's an abused dog. All the classic symptoms of an abused dog syndrome. Powers crawls. I'm not suggesting the owner does that, but I am suggesting he does not belong there. He's dug himself a hole because he can't get to his box up until fairly recently. He had no shelter other than a hole he dug. And I have pictures of all of this. The vetting, when we were, when the first theme, I'm going to go back. Dr. McCathy, back in May, was sufficiently concerned about the surviving pups and the two mamas, that she ordered their removal. They were removed from the property, they went into foster, and they ultimately went into wonderful homes. One of those, they all had hookworm. And if you're not familiar with it, it's nasty, and it eats their guts. There is one adult female today who's still suffering from damage in the intestines as a result of hookworm. Why am I saying this? All of the dogs today have hookworm. I know those puppies have worms. And hookworms getting to the soil, unless you take, are very proactive about solving the problem. I'm willing to bet that the dogs today have hookworm. It's terrible. So they're not being vetted on top of everything else. Oh, and I don't have pictures of it, but there's a male with two dislocated shoulders. When I mentioned that to Animal Control, the officers are not medical vet people. They can only go by what they visually see. So I suggested they get a vet out there, unless they don't do that. One, one of the biggest points of contention, which is so clear to me with hundreds of pictures of water buckets that look exactly like that, exactly, is the water. With no running water on the property, and an owner who's only there intermittently, and the dogs are at the mercy of his bringing water, bottled water, which he doesn't always do, no provision has been made when he goes out of town, a responsible person to take care of these dogs. Very frequently, almost always, their buckets look like that. Now, is that fresh, clean bottle? I don't think so. But when it's topped off with clean water and still dirty with bugs and larvae, it's still dirty, but he's been found to be compliant. I don't understand. I do not understand how this is compliance. The water pump, I had a picture, I have a picture of the water pump. He's, Jerry rintoses so that it appears that there's water coming out of the pump. The pump does not work. He came back early from a vacation because of the loose dogs last week, and I understand he's fixed the pump, but that would be about the first time in four months. I've been bringing water. Lots of questions here for me as a, as a dog rescue person. Even the code as it exists now, with its ambiguities and the nuances of what's, what's too green, what's not green enough, you know, you know, how do you know if they've been fed? You know, they don't have to be fed, but every two days. Well, are they thin? What's too thin? There are thin dogs on that property. You go to feed them, they're famished. They're not getting fed on a regular basis. But if you just go back to the ordinances that exist and the law, I don't believe it's being enforced. And when you think about the fact that this has been a four-month situation, they've been aware of it for four months and not taken action for four months, that's negligence, in my mind. You have an owner who's still not living on the property. They've known that. He actually doesn't even own the land. I don't know. Are there building code violations there? I don't know. I'm concerned about the dogs, and there's nobody there to take care of them. He was given until the 19th, when I first arrived. I was told that it was already an investigation, and, which had been opened, I don't know, a couple of weeks prior on an earlier visit. During that time, puppies died. So what is a sufficient length of time to give an owner who's got dogs in such horrendous conditions to make, make corrections? I don't know, but I know dogs died in the meantime. Is there anything sanitary today? No. Would you put your dog in feces and flies? No, I took the picture out. The sick old female, he, he, the owner appears to neglect her the most. She is consistently the one without food, water. She has fleas, she has flies all over her, and she's not well. Is this mistreatment? In my book, it is. And are there health and safety concerns? Yes, and I can list more beyond the dislocated shoulders and the potential for hookworm damage, and it goes on. Nobody's looking at these dogs. And then, from my heart, I will tell you, these are not hunting dogs. Not that he's claiming they are. He's not registered with the state, and they're not tattooed. But he purchased them for the purpose of hunting them back in March. They've never left their kennels, they've never been off-leash, except recently when they all got loose. They're not hunting dogs. I know my beagles, and I know hunting dog behavior. These were family pets at one point, I assure you, and this is where they're being kept. There's no quality of life here. I, it's not my position to make a recommendation. I would only ask that we consider, you consider, Animal Control consider, some options. Let's just remove the dogs. At the, at the beginning, I offered by them. I offered to take care of them. I offered to take the sick ones, the old one, the abused one. Oh, no. He doesn't want to surrender any of them. So what is it going to take? I don't know. But I would like to see some or all of those dogs removed, because he's obviously not correcting the situation, and Animal Control is not enforcing the law. This case, I believe, warrants investigation. I have, I have documents that would suggest that things have not been done right. I'm happy to provide those to you. But when you have somebody who calls Animal Control and is supposed to make, I stood there on the property one night, actually. I stood there and waited and waited, because I wanted them to see noncompliance. I was told by Jenna Mullenax to send my documents. She wanted documentation. I said, "Fine, but I'm standing here right now." She couldn't get anybody out there that night, but she assured me that somebody would be out there first thing in the morning. And then I had a conversation with her about the fact that in prior instances, somehow the owner had been informed, and he had made corrections. She assured me, the owner would not be called until they got to the property that morning. Well, they never did get to the property that. They didn't get there until 12:40. And Steve Stuber told me later that he was aware of it at 9 o'clock in the morning. He had been made aware of it, that was a Saturday morning. And, and his officers were too busy to get out there. But in the meantime, according to the neighbors, that owner made a trip out there. He lives in North Carolina. He made a trip out, made corrections, and Officer Sexton found him to be in compliance at 12:40. I believe this needs to be investigated. And beyond that, I would suggest that there be some oversight here. I have gone to the sheriff, I've gone to code enforcement, Sergeant Strange, I've gone to the Humane Society. But within York County government, I've been stymied. Nobody's taking action, and I don't understand. So I have lots of documentation, and I'm happy to share it with you. My numbers, on the presentation, as is my email, I make myself available. I've wanted to be a part of the solution here, not create a problem. But I can't keep running out there, bringing water and looking at those faces. I can't do it. On the first, on the presentation, as is my email, I make myself available. I've wanted to be a part of the solution here, not create a problem, but I can't keep running out there, bringing water and looking at those faces. I can't do it. Somebody needs to do their job.
Thank you, Ms. Parrish. And I'm sure our county manager and county attorney will be in touch with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And...
...are these dogs? Could I speak one minute?
I'm sorry, sir, you're not listed. If you, you had a chance to sign up, but nobody signed up for public forum. And I wouldn't like to remind everybody that, you know, be courteous of everybody that speaks, because if you have an outburst, then it cuts back, and then I'll have to cut somebody off from being able to speak. So let's show everybody courtesy and respect. But the next, and I would remind everybody, we have a long agenda, so if you would try, that anybody else that's signed up to speak, kind of try to keep it succinct the best you can. The next person is Sheila Link. And Sheila, name and address.
Hello, my name is Sheila Link, and I live at 1015 Bonham Road in Lake Wylie, 29710. My family has resided in Lake Wylie since 1999. I am speaking to you today to comment on the growth in our area versus the quality of life and environmental impact that is affecting our community. It was at the council meeting September of last year that I first expressed some of the environmental and safety concerns. Since then, other meetings have taken place with what appears to be little progress. There was hope that the Lake Wylie overlay amendment would pass, especially with such a large number of concerned citizens agreeing that tighter, tighter building standards, excuse me, and zoning regulations were needed. The current growth versus quality of life and environmental impact imbalance is obvious to those who live in our community as well as our surrounding communities. High-density growth is out of control. Our county's planning and development department appears to be able to make only decisions based on adherence to existing regulations. Plans submitted by developers that meet requirements are automatically approved without considering the land's natural landscape and population density issues. The department acts as administrators only, with no authority to require additional requirements to ensure the quality of life for existing residents. Maxing development potential on a piece of land is not a good fit when not only, when it not only adversely affects the land itself, but also the quality of life for those who live around it. Traffic, noise, density, and safety all have diminished outcomes. Traffic, especially during the peak hours, has become an overly congested and dangerous problem. This photo was taken on Highway 49 at 5:15, across from Bonham Road. The traffic can back up for miles during rush hours, and this has become more the norm than the exception. Dropping off and picking up our children from school and various extra activities during these hours is terrible. Oftentimes, new proposed developments change existing neighborhood road infrastructures and traffic patterns where residents already live. These developments are approved without any input from the affected community or any real investigation by the agencies responsible for authorizing these projects. The rapid growth in Lake Wylie has created the need for more schools. A new elementary school is under construction and set to open in 2016. It's about 1.85 miles distance from Crowder's Creek Elementary. I've been told that some of our children that attend Crowder's Creek, including my daughter, will be switched to the other school. She's been attending there for four years now. As shown in picture two, and I don't know, okay, thank you. This particular pump station is located on the very first road off of 49 in Lake Wylie, and sits by two popular restaurants, an area boat landing, and marina. Many of these stations are in extremely close proximity to the lake, are aesthetically unappealing, and are next to runoff drain culverts that flow directly into the lake, which puts the waterway in immediate environmental danger. Anyone living or working near a pump station is familiar with the nuisance of the odors that must be managed monthly by a tanker trunk that averages about one and a half hours at a particular site at any time after 7:00 a.m. This does not account for the pump station failures, sewage overflows, noise and light disturbances associated fixing the problem. I know of 12 pump stations within a 2.5-mile stretch of Highway 49. For aesthetics, most have no landscaping, some only a few young plants situated around a portion of a chain-linked fence. Much of the land that has now been approved for development in Lake Wylie has very challenge, challenging topographies with high bluffs, running streams, creek beds, old farm irrigation culverts that all flow into the lake. These same creeks and coves have suffered environmental damage from earlier developments. Although local and state regulations, timbering permits, and sedimentation control measures are for the most part adhered to, today's land clearing practices cause obvious damage. These next three photos of Village of Lake Wylie development in June are examples of this. Picture three, the top photo, shows clear cutting used by today's developers and a blown-out silt fence at the bottom. Bottom photo shows the running stream completely overrun by sedimentation control measures. Picture four, top shows the bottom of the creek filled with the runoff. The bottom photo shows the cove is filled knee-deep in mud. Picture five, this is 15 years later in the grassy area there. That is the sedimentation that has not pushed out, and I want to know, why aren't the ones that create the damage to our lakes and streams held accountable for fixing the damage they cause? Fines are simply not enough. Picture show, picture six, shows recently an approved development plan with the sewage pump station that is right next to the one of these creeks shown in blue, and I don't know. Let me see. There's, there's the string, pump station and pump station. Directly across the creek is another pump station already in place and being serviced by the same company responsible for more than 20 spills in Tega K. Both stations shown by the two red dots are about 100 yards from each other and from the lake itself. That simply should not make common environmental sense to anyone. An example of an acceptable landscape maintained pump station was shown in the picture two. Unfortunately, our local and state planning and environmental agencies simply do not have sufficient regulations in place to protect the lake and its corresponding creeks and streams. Although it is clear that the, that the type of land clearing developers are approved to use are damaging our natural resources, and continued pleas by the community to be responsible, authorities for, I'm sorry, by our community to be responsible, authorities for change seem to have little impact. In concluding, I would like to read you the York County Planning Development Mission Statement that's on their website. The mission of York County Planning and Development Services is to enhance York County's quality of life, environment, growth by providing the citizens of York County with comprehensive planning, efficient code enforcement, courtesy, courteous, technical assistance, and public forums. I believe that I speak on behalf of the residents who live in the Lake Wylie area when I say that except for the growth, planning and development falls short for the rest of their mission. Our request is simple, makes sense, and will help York County obtain its mission. Please stop the uncontrolled growth until rules and regulations can be put into action to correct the adverse effects that are presently taking place to our community, quality of life, and environment. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, please, this is so imperative that I must ask something, if you don't mind.
You mean for Ms. Link?
Concerned, yes.
Would they just be a quickie, short, one-sentence answer, that's the kind of question you'd...
Ms., Ms. Link, I appreciate you being here tonight. Would you think that it would be an excellent idea that if the press would choose to do so, that these pictures that you just presented would serve as an exclamation point for a lot of folks, if they got to see it, if the general public got to see this?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next person will be Mr. Tillie, Carrie. Carrie, if you could, keep it succinct.
I'll do my best. Let's see if I can just work this thing. Okay, good. I just would like to thank the council for giving me an opportunity to speak. I know y'all hear a lot of people with problems in the, in the county, and that's a good thing that people can voice that. But I'm going to give you some good news today. The cultural heritage museums are in great shape. I know, and I want to thank the council for the support that you've given us in the time that I've been here and the commitment over probably 50 years or more now that this council has made to the museums of this county. Back in 2011 was a tough time for us. There was a lot, there were a lot of changes, a little bit before I came, but a lot of changes, and it was considered experimental, and a lot of people were critical of it. But I think that we see it's working, and it's working not just because it was some genius idea of how to work it, but it's working because we've got good support from the council, the people who served on the commission. We've got an amazing staff. My senior management team has over 200 hours, I mean, 200 years combined. That's averaging 25 years apiece of experience, and people have listened to this. So I'm proud of what we've been able to accomplish, and we've, we've got a whole lot of things. The community's getting excited about what the museums are doing, and that's reflected in some of the numbers I'm going to give you. If you look at our total visitation at all the sites combined, we've, we're up again this year, and that's up 37% from 2010 to 2011, and that's really amazing. We've done that by keeping expenses under budget at the same time. We're finishing, this year we finished with a positive net income, and actually, most years we have, and we've had a 200% increase in our fund balance. So we've got a healthy fund balance, which was actually pretty unhealthy in 2010. So a lot of improvement there, serving 37% more people with spending $500,000 less in our actual operating expenses, so I'm very proud of that. And it's not just a one-site growth. We did have an initial spike with, when we opened the children's museum in December 2010, so you can see the jump up in its first full year, but that's continued to grow. Museum of York County has exceeded 30,000 visitors for what we believe is the first time in its 65-year history. Brattonsville has been on the rise for the last three years. It's also at a five-year high, and even the McKelvey Center, where the numbers are much smaller over there, where we do the concerts and the research room, even that's showing positive growth. If you look at it another way, the three major categories of growth, general mission, special events, and groups, which are our school field trips primarily, all of those are at five-year highs as well, and different sites are excelling in different areas. General mission is that the Main Street Children's Museum's incredible, their growth. Special events is something we've targeted at Brattonsville, and that's doing very well in special events, and our school groups are doing very well at the Museum of York County. So all positive, all seven areas to look at, at your visitation, they're all at five-year highs. General membership, this is the membership levels under $150, yeah, and that's grown 52% since 2010, 2011, and I will say that most of this, the Main Street Children's Museum, which is doing very well in membership. The young families like to be able to come back over and over, but it's, it's been steady growth that's continued. And what I'm excited about, both visitation and membership, this represents support from a broad-based grassroots support of the community to have that kind of growth in that area. People like our programs, they like what we do. It's not about having big parties and getting the giant fundraisers. We're down a little bit in some of the higher categories of contributions. I'll be excited about making some progress in there, but seeing this broad-based support is very exciting. When you talk about support, you can't really leave out the volunteers. That's a big part of what we do. We had over 25,000 hours of volunteer time put in, and if you translate that into what the going rate on independentsector.org is, that amounts to $522,000 worth of, worth of time donated, and that won't even show up on the books, but it's very positive to see that growth. And we had a little drop from last year, which was a peak year, but still the second highest in five years. We continue to receive recognition in our field. The Achievement of Excellence Award was for the Huxte Feet Battlefield Trail, and actually, a lot of the research, and that's from the Confederation of South Carolina Local Historical Societies. We opened the battlefield trail in July of last year. It was well-received, a good visitation when we opened it at the annual reenactment, and we were proud to receive this award and recognition. We had an exhibit called Way Back When, Ice Age Beasts of the Carolinas. Last year, I was talking about how it won a state award from South Carolina Federation of Museums. This year, it won the regional award for Southeastern Museum Conference. That's our conference in museums for the southeast. It won the Award of Excellence for its category, and in that category, it was competing against exhibits with three times the budget. So very excited about, about that. This was just one of my personal highlights, was the week that the Friendship Nine had their sentences vacated, they attended a concert, and Ruthie Foster, a three-time Grammy nominee, was paying tribute to them, said, "Well, y'all come on up if you want to sing," and Dove Massey and David Williamson actually got on stage and sang "Woke Up This Morning With Freedom On My Mind." It was a powerful moment, and one of my favorite moments since I've been here, and I just had to include that. I mentioned special events at Historic Brattonsville. Last year, if you remember the report, I showed you a bunch of charts, how each, each individual event was up. Well, you know, the, the individual events vary, but last year, 2014, 15, we actually increased special events by 21% over what I was bragging about last year. So this is an area we have focused on with our marketing, so you see the various posters of events. By the way, I would like to invite y'all out to see Sweat of Our Brows this weekend. It's a pretty powerful program. If you could come out, it should be fun for you. This was something that y'all remember, that the council in York County Forever helped us acquire that property. I don't know where my laser, laser pointer is, but if you look where it says new property, that triangle, I mean, not triangle, rectangle, you can see why that was important to us, not only to acquire part of the Historic Bratton Farmstead that's along the south of Fish and Creek. It's actually the, if, if that had been purchased by somebody else, even just for hunting, then it could create a threat for our trails and everything else that goes back through that area. So that was very important, and we do appreciate York County Forever and the council helping us acquire those 37 acres to secure and complete our border. I don't want to go into a lot about the dispute, but I can't fail to mention that there were some positive things that came out of that. It was a very difficult time for me to be involved with that. I usually like being very positive in the community and building bridges, but I think it had to be done. We did, we did what was necessary, and I appreciate the council's support in that. But as a result of us taking a stand, we have $8 million for capital projects. This isn't an endowment, this isn't for fundraising or administration, it's specifically for capital projects, and I think we can do a lot for the county with that money. And then if you look at the endowment that we received, it's $477,000 that will help us take care of our collections and exhibits. And then we received 60 acres of land on the Catawba River, which can only be used for recreational or cultural or historical purposes. So quite, quite a bit of good happened for that. It was things that I wish it didn't come to that, to do what we did, what we had to do, and something very positive resulted, and hopefully that will prepare us for the future. Behind the scenes, we did a lot of work on preparation for reaccreditation. This is the American Alliance of Museums. There's only 14 in the state of museums that are accredited. It's sort of a seal that shows you've met the high standards of the museum industry. We're in a... We're in a tough category. Only 2% of accredited museums are from county or regional government. So we're in a tough category there, but we, we have been accredited since 2006. We're up for reaccreditation. It's not just a matter of all museums are credited, it's actually a rare distinction, and we're very proud of it. We just had our site visit last week, so we'll hear in November whether we do get reaccredited or not, but I do feel good about our preparations and the site visit. And then the last slide is talking about planning for the future. We spent a lot of time last year, actually over the last few years, working on it that culminated in the institutional plan. And that institutional plan actually is setting the direction for the staff. It was something, the staff worked on it with the commission, the commission approved it in February, and this shows us the direction we should head. It identifies projects, identifies some of the projects we'll be spending some of the $8 million on, and it also identifies, you know, some other things that we need to work on. The second major thing we worked on, Historic Brattonsville Interpretive Plan, some people may have called it the Veils of Time years ago. This is something that existed prior to 1997, and for some reason, we have decided not to move forward with a lot of our plans at Historic Brattonsville. We actually, it was part of the campaign to raise money. It was on one of the lists of things along with the new museum, and we are excited about that. We're gonna be doing a presentation at the September 28 Commission Meeting, if anybody wants to see that. I would encourage you to come out and see it, and I'll be talking to y'all more about the specifics of this in the future. And then we, we worked on what was a preliminary capital projects plan to sort of identify some of the, how we're gonna pay for some of the things, and how we can structure the prioritizing, the time, and what happens in what year of some of the capital projects that were identified in the institutional plan. And I say it's preliminary because it relates to, there's a lot of variables that could happen with the money from the Foundation for Carolinas and how it's distributed. So there's a lot of things that could happen. So it's a preliminary plan, but I'll be glad to share that with y'all at some future date or give you copies of what we have in writing as well. But the big thing about this plan, we've identified how to pay for the capital projects without asking you for more money. And I'm, I'm very proud we're able to do that, and I'd like to announce, just this past Friday, we got a commitment for another $150,000 from a foundation in this area that is not government-related, and we're excited about getting that funding. And I'll tell you a little bit more. I haven't got the official notice, but I do know that they voted on it and approved funding for another $150,000. So I want to thank y'all for the support that you've given to the museums. It's making a difference, and the museums are in good shape. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Tillie. You have a lot to be excited about, and the restructuring. I want to thank the commission that kind of put everything back together after we had the financial concerns, and it's, like I said, you have a very bright future, and I appreciate all the hard work that you've done, and the commission did to get everything back in order, and the future looks very bright.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person, Sandy Andrews.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to bring you up to date on the percent of the goals that York County has met with the work-ready communities. As you can see, as far as ACT is concerned, we have met 100%, and, and I don't think I have been here to tell you that we were the fourth largest in the state, goals. We had most, largest goals of all the counties. We were the fourth largest. Greenville, Lexington, and Richland was, had to have a few more goals than we do. And we, we are 2282 was our goal, and if you could move it over just a little. We have actually issued 5,507 National Career Readiness Certificates. So we're waiting for, we're waiting on the governor to announce that we are certified because the state has requirements, along with ACT. And a state requirement is that the last three years' average graduation rate has to be 73.1. Well, I've looked at all of our high schools in York County, and we're, we're well above 80%. And then the other goal that the state had was the talent assessment that goes along with work keys, and that's the soft skills assessment, that they required 25% of each county's goals, that they had to have talent, and we've done more than that. So it, we're just kind of waiting on the governor. Right now, there are 13 counties that has, have not been certified in the state of South Carolina. Our state is way up there, based on the national, the one, the states that are participating. We're doing really well. I'm sure Governor Haley wants to be able to announce that this is a certified work-ready state because she wants all those new businesses in, as we do, and we want to show people that our people have the skills needed by employers to come into our state. And that's what this is all about, is the National Career Readiness Certificates. They've taken work keys, and as y'all know, all of the juniors in high school now have to take work keys. And they did that the first time, April the 29th of this year. They did with that, you know, they got rid of the HSAF, the exit exam, and now it's ACT and work keys that is issued, that's administered in, in our high schools. So that was a help for us with the emerging part of it up there. You can see we had 440 was our goal, and we've got 3,058 that we issued the National Career Readiness Certificates for. So, and our businesses, it shows 116. We actually have around 125, but some of them were not large enough to count as a whole point. They counted as a quarter if they only had less than five employees, but they still signed up with us and got counted a little bit. So we have certainly met that goal as well. And I, I brought a list for you of the employers that have signed up, if you'd like to see that. We're really happy, but we're gonna keep going because to stay certified, you have to keep going, testing and, and getting businesses. And according to Rob Youngblood, we have 800 and something businesses in York County. So we, we've still got chances to get more, and, and there's gonna be a symposium at the end of this month that ACT's going to work with us, and, and we'll decide, you know, what's gonna be coming, what, how, how do we stay certified? And I think York County's gonna do it. York County's done really well with it. So any questions?
No, ma'am. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
So we had no public forums, so the next order of business is public hearings. First item is to consider first reading and public hearing on case number 1503, rezoned property from PD to BD3 at 4240 Old York Road in the Rock Hill Community. Anybody here want to speak in favor? Anybody opposed?
Move to close.
Got a motion to close? Do we have discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Can I have a new motion?
To approve with the conditions 1 through 6 listed in the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, third reading of case number 1519, rezoned property from BD1 to RC2 at Lovelace Road and Fire Tower Road in the Rock Hill Community. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with the condition of no manufactured homes on the property.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, case number 1520, rezoned property from RUD to RUD1 at 954 Highway 274 in the Clover Lake Wiley Community. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve, third reading.
Need a second? Discussion. Question on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, consider third reading, case number 1521, rezoned property from RD1 to BD3 at 2696 Highway 160 West in the Fort Mill Community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, sir. Mr. Henderson.
Maybe I misunderstood, but especially something that was mentioned a little bit, but anyway, there was petitions concerning this, and I would hope...
It's a different one.
This is not the same one. My mistake. Sorry.
Okay. Any other comments? Question on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, let's see, that was number three, wasn't it?
Yep. Number four, next.
Right. Thank you, sir. Okay. Consider third reading, case number 1522, request rezoning property from UD to White Industrial at 3536 Center Circle Drive in the Fort Mill Community. This is the one that...
Take a motion to defer until the following meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Henderson.
Well, like I was saying a minute ago, and I apologize to each of you, speaking out of turn.
No, you're fine.
But, you know, I just hope that we will all consider the, the petitions that I think some of us missed, based on the information that I've been presented and told about. And, and anyone that's inside there, when you're talking about folks inside there, usually we, in the past, we respond to such a, an amazing response, such as what we have here, and I just hope that we'll really consider that, and everyone that's involved right there directly with this, just like we would anywhere else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Any other comments? Question? Yes, sir. Sorry, Mr. Williams.
Yeah, I mean, I share some of the same concerns. The, Mr. Johnson, I believe, when he was discussing with me about deferring this, part of the goal was to see if they could come to some kind of agreement and, and go from there, and I would hope, hope that, that that happens.
Question on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, consider second reading, case number 1523, rezoned property from RC1 to RUD1 at 5752 Highway 55 East in the Clover Community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, council to consider amending in third reading of an ordinance to amend sections 3236A1, 3236A2, 3237B of the York County Code of Ordinances to specify service upon and reappointment to the Cultural and Heritage Commission to clarify the period of time during which officers to the Cultural and Heritage Commission shall be elected, and to consider other matters related thereto.
Move to approve, third reading.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, consider third reading of an ordinance to amend the code of the County of York, Chapter 30, Section 30.09E2, in order to clarify the amount of time which must, must pass before an individual can be reappointed to a board or commission and to provide for other matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Johnson.
I want to point out that at our joint Finance and Economic Development Committee meeting the other day, this ordinance was discussed, and the fact that when we are revising the Economic Development Board's ordinance, that we may include language which would, which would...
Supersede.
Supersede this ordinance, and it was, I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention that we may, we may be doing that at a future meeting, but that certainly we should support this revision at this time.
Any other comments? Question on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, consider second reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and among York County and the Lash Group Incorporated, a subsidiary of AmerisourceBerg and Drug Corporation and Kingsley Number 9 LLC and/or its affiliates, whereby York County will enter into a fee in lieu of tax arrangement with the sponsor and sponsor affiliate, and providing for payment by the sponsor and sponsor affiliate of certain fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes, providing for special source revenue or infrastructure improvement credits, providing for the allocation of fees in lieu of taxes payable under the agreement for the establishment of a multi-county industrial business park, and other matters related thereto.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
I have one...
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Cox.
I'm in favor of doing these projects. I think one of the things that I still would like to see in our accountability is, for instance, with the new employment, the 2200, is that folks in our existing York County proper? How much of that are folks getting jobs, or are those folks moving from existing jobs outside of the area into our community and, and impacting the residential part of it? I think we need to incorporate that when we start evaluating the effectiveness of these programs. That part needs to be in there, and I continue to ask for that to be done as we implement this going forward.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Questions? Question on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, new business. Audra, Ms. Miller, to give a comprehensive plan update. This is FYI.
Good evening, council. Audra Miller, Planning Director. I'm just here to give a little update on what happened after the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee Joint Meeting of Council. We did have a meeting with the advisory committee on September 3. We discussed their concerns, and first and foremost, they did confirm that they had received baseline data from us, and that the consensus was they did not feel the need to review, re-interview everyone that staff had met with during the process, during, during the early winter of this year. What they did want is they wanted us to bring in three specific groups, and we are in the process of setting up those meetings. They wanted representatives of economic development, utilities, and transportation, and we will do that. We will, for the utilities, we will, we'll invite Rock Hill as well as our own county staff on that. We also came up with a plan moving forward. We will meet with the advisory committee every other week until the end of the year. They definitely wanted to have more meetings, more dialogue, and so we will be doing that as well. The ultimate goal for the schedule then is to have one more public meeting the first part of December before we get into the holiday, true holiday season, where we would present the future land use plan and the goals and objectives, with the hope that we would present the comprehensive plan to the Planning Commission in January. The advisory committee also expressed that they thought the agricultural community had been underrepresented so far in this process, and we didn't disagree with them. We did not have much input from them during the public meetings, so one of the members gave us the names of some people to talk to, and we are setting that up at the staff level to get some input from the agricultural side of the, of the county. And I think that was, that was the last of what I needed to report to you. So we will set out a new schedule so council is aware of it when our every other week meetings will be set up.
Questions for Ms. Miller?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
And this is so important, you know, we want to do it right, so we're with you...
All right.
...for the time you need. Next item, consider approval of nominated applicants for service for boards and commissions from the Finance and Operations Committee meeting on October 17, along with nominations from the floor, and I'll let Chairman, Mr. Johnson, take over.
Make a motion to approve Lindsey Walker to the York County Forever District 6, Suzanne Thompson, York County Library Board District 2, Mary Wendell, York County Library Board District 5, John Bramblett, York County Library Board District 7, Russell Ashley, Employee Grievance Committee, Sabrina Moore, Employee Grievance Committee, Jeff Blair, Zoning Board of Appeals District 5, Bridget Miller, Catawba Regional Workforce Investment Board.
And I'll...
Second. Got a second? Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Any nominations from the floor? There being none. Question on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, consider designating Keystone as the Act 301 Substance Abuse Authority for York County for year to begin October 1, 2015. In a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, council to consider award of bid number 2302 regarding the renovation of the historic York County Courthouse to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Leitner Construction of Rock Hill, in the amount of $7,92,224.
Move to approve.
We have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Yes, sir. Mr. Williams.
I'd just like to add to that motion that we approve alternate... I'd just like to add to that motion that we approve alternates one, two, three, and five as well. In other words, every alternate but four.
Yeah, Chris and Jim, why don't? Yes, sir.
To go through the budget and everything, if that's okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Do we have the motion on the floor? We'll ask for questions as soon as they're done.
And I'll be very brief. We bid this project, it pleases me to be here tonight, Mr. Chair and members of the council. Chris and I and the administration finally brought this project almost to traction. We had a bid day on the August twentieth. I want to give you a little background. If you recall, when we began our involvement with the county, the budget, development budget was ten point one. We went through and tried to give it a second glance and felt comfortable with our nine point two, almost a million dollars or a little bit more than a million dollars delta. Of that, nine point one two five, the breakdown is as follows, seven point nine zero six, construction. That's the most we can encumber with our construction funds. Design and testing, five hundred, and FF and E. FF and E is turn the building upside down and shake it. Everything that falls out would be in that budget. This is our bid tabulation. We pre-qualified nine bidders. Of those nine, four of them bid. These are the certified results. This is the recommendation would be base bid with Leitner Construction, which who's a York County, who's a York County firm. Base bid nine, seven million ninety-two thousand two hundred and twenty-four. Alternate one, which is an emergency generator of ninety-three thousand. Alternate two, a dumbwaiter of thirty-seven thousand. That is because the elevators could not go to the fourth floor and to get files from the file storage area to the fourth floor. We would use that. Install alternate three as a new entrance, so and that reason why we need that is separate construction traffic and the business of the county. It would be located on this side of the parking lot, so that that actually parking lot will act a little more efficient. Alternate four.
That's a new entrance to this building, right?
Correct, to the parking lot. Alternate four.
Oh, okay.
Alternate four is a second year of warranty. Industry standards are generally one year for material, labor. Others items have longer compressors for HVC, things of that. I would recommend taking that money and putting it in account and, and you won't spend it in five, in ten years.
And that was number four, right?
That was four. We would not recommend that. And then alternate five is a new entrance canopy, and that is to transition people from the outside to the inside while they're going through the security. That total being seven million three hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. So that would be the amount that we are recommending for award. How that looks overall, construction budget, less demolition package that was previously awarded, and that is a net amount that hundred and sixty-one thousand four oh eight eighty actually represents about a thirteen thousand deduction from the amount that was awarded when this package was bid. That was a savings that we realized. The bidding, the build, building package of the base bid plus alternates totaled, that would be encumbered to date in the construction budget of seven point five million. That leaves us four hundred and six thousand three hundred and eight dollars and twenty cents under budget for the construction funds. That was my.
Okay, so if you don't mind, hang tight here in case there's any questions. Mr. Williams, you refreshed my memory on the alternates. You didn't include four, did you, on your motion?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, actually, I was, I'm waiting for him to accept it.
I accept it.
All right. Okay. So, questions for? Chris or Jim?
I think Christie's second for the, for, if we want to get it.
Clarification. There are no questions? Well, gentlemen, I do want to thank you for what you've done. I do want to provide, thank.
Maybe we ought to vote.
Well.
Just in case it goes wrong, we want to thank them.
I followed what you said. But I do want to provide some clarifications on the article that Ms. Becknell wrote a couple, three days ago. Definitely, there were years of delays, no doubt about it. Debate, there essentially were none. In fact, it was kind of an in-house thing under the previous administration, and with the help of the new administration, Mr. Shanahan got to the facts and got to the truth and brought them forward to council and allowed this council to quickly address the issues and move forward in a very expedient manner. And the old courthouse was saved, with all due respect to the York Mayor, who is a friend of mine. But in all factual reality, the reason this courthouse was saved was for the work and due diligence of Chris and Jim with Cummings Property, who they showed through their due diligence that the reconditioning, remodeling of the present structure was a lot more cost effective for the taxpayer than building a new structure. And one thing I meant to ask you, what kind of, how much are we looking at in terms of building permits? Ballpark? Total for the whole project? And I do want to point out, just for the benefit of the public, that there were appearances by at least one York Town Council member who assured us that the town would do anything in their power to make this more expedient and do what they could to help us in any way they could financially or time-wise. But they now sent a, after those statements, they've now sent the county a bill for around thirty thousand in building permits. So that would have been a little bit of help there that they didn't foresee to provide. But that being said, question on the motion, all those.
I'd like to make.
Yeah, yes, sir.
I would just like it, the public, to know that the City of York is not the only municipality who has billed us for permits on anything in their property or in their city. And they have agreed to look at it again when their budget year ends, because it is something they budgeted in last year. But the City of Rock Hill has billed us, the county billed itself for permit fees in the past, so. It's not something that York has singled us out on.
And that's very true, and that's something we've paid with a lot of buildings throughout the county, but members of the York Council expressed they wanted to work with us, and in this case, they brought that forward, not the council. So I just wanted to make that point. Yes, sir. Mr. Shanahan.
Just one other thing. It was brought to my attention actually earlier today that in some of the newspaper articles out there, they were saying this was part of the referendum, and we want to make sure that everybody knows this is a separate project that has nothing at all to do with the referendum.
Absolutely not. In fact, this was first had money set aside back in two thousand and, way before my time, two thousand and seven or something like, six? In fact, it was the, supposed to be finished by, before I even got on council, twenty and ten. But question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item. Counsel to consider insurance settlement for wrecked service vehicle.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, consider authorizing staff to prepare specifications and seek bids for replacement vehicles.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, counsel to consider approval of a commitment for up to two hundred thousands for roadway improvements on Carowinds Boulevard associated with the construction of a new exit roadway at Carowinds.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, counsel, consider adoption of a resolution creating a capital project sales tax commission to consider capital projects for the capital project sales tax.
Move to approve.
And do we have a second?
I have a second. The version, the paper version in the yellow folder.
Okay, do I, you want me to read that into the record, Michael?
The title, yeah.
Okay, a res, just read the title? Okay. A resolution creating a capital project sales tax commission to consider capital projects for the capital project sales tax. Any questions, concerns? Yes, sir. Did I see you raise your hand?
Uh, yes, this, this is concerning the future pennies. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. In fact, we have to.
All right, all right, just want to make sure.
Okay.
All right. I, I know some folks have served us well in the past, and I'd just like to really, really try to emphasize the importance of, as far as I'm concerned, I'd, and not that these folks have not done a good job, because they have. I'd just like to mix it up this time around, if at all possible, and.
You're talking about the members?
Yeah, the members, when it comes time, if we could. Not that, I mean, just depending on who, if there's some that really, really stand out and, and all that kind of stuff, that's fine. But I would really like to consider some, some others and give some of these others a break, because I know that some of these folks are actually tired of being on boards.
Okay, you're essentially just saying we need some fresh new faces.
Right, yeah.
Compared to the previous people serving for maybe more than one of them. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, counsel, consider approval, approval for payment to South Carolina DOT for their services rendered on pennies for progress projects as described in invoices from twenty-twelve through third quarter twenty-fifteen. After we have a motion, I'm going to let Mr. Shanahan make any comments he wants to make.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Shanahan.
Basically, the, these are invoices for work that has already been done. It is the money for them. It was already a part of the pennies, and we've been holding it until the state of South Carolina asks us for the money. So this is not taking anything new. It's, it's money that was in the program. They've just taken a while to get to us, and in response to that, we've been working with them pretty hard, and they're going to give us quarterly bills, and this won't happen again. We just wanted it come before you because it was such a large number and it was such a large amount of time.
So what Mr. Shanahan's saying is essentially, we had the money set aside for the bills, but they just never billed us and asked us for the money.
Which, which. It's fine with me, because we're earning interest on it.
Yeah, and the logistics are going to be.
As long as we, they don't, won't catch us off guard.
Although, to Mr. Shanahan's credit, it's just like, well, guys, we appreciate the interest we did earn, but we need to have more upfront quick notice about this stuff in the future. So question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, counsel to consider award of bid number twenty-three oh four regarding twenty-eleven Capital Project Sales and Use Tax Program project for the construction of Hidden Valley Road and Musket Hill Road paving project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Eagle Construction Company of Newberry, South Carolina, in the amount of six hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred dollars and five cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, consider accepting into the county roadway inventory the Regent Parkway Bridge through receipt of the grant of title and right of way for bridge roadway from Colston Enterprises and Corporate and Yoclet LLC and directing county management, the county attorney, and staff to take such actions necessary for recording the grant of title and related plat to perfect ownership and addition of the bridge in the county inventory.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, do we have a motion on consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Committee reports are next. Joint Finance and Operations Committee and Economic Development Committee Chairman Michael Johnson and Chairman Robert Winkler, Mr. Johnson first.
Mr. Winkler actually chaired that meeting, so I'll let him handle.
Mr. Winkler.
What update?
Um, we met and had a real good discussion with staff and also Mr. Swinson, Economic Development, and looked at several changes that have been proposed on the Economic Development Committee as far as trying to get more active representation on that committee and looking at, you know, the target areas of where we're looking for industry and making sure they were represented on the committee. Felt like we had a real good understanding and worked through with that, but we did ask for a little bit of rewording on some of it, so we don't have a actual update to present to council yet at this time. But we, it just felt like we needed to look at that and make sure that we have refocused and making sure we have the best people on that committee to help us acquire the new industries that we're looking for in our economic development areas.
And I think it's worth noting that when we got on the council, we were pushing pretty hard for CEOs and plant managers to get more involved. And I think since we've been on, we've appointed those people in those positions, but it's good that the committee by Chairman Winkler and Johnson are kind of making it an official thing instead of just the next council comes on board and forgets those goals or whatever. This kind of puts it more in a smooth format for the future.
And just so everyone knows, this will actually come before council in October. We had originally talked about doing it at our very next meeting. However, we wanted this to have an opportunity to actually go in front of the Economic Development Board and allow them to discuss it and, and give their feedback, and they don't actually meet to the Tuesday after we meet. So this, this, but we should hopefully see an ordinance at our first meeting in October.
And I think our economic development directors, we're in Sweden, Sweden or Germany right now. Is he not part of the state?
Working on, the state asking to go over there with them and work on some more recruiting.
Bringing more jobs to the York County and South Carolina area. Uh, next committees.
I just have one question about that.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I know that, I know that there are two folk, two at least slots that we are not appointing folks to because of this discussion about how are we going to structure it differently? And one comment I would like to make is that it looks like, you know, on the rest of the boards, we have representation from each of the districts, and in this case, we don't because it's set up by pointees from Economic Development Board. So in the case of District Five, we don't have representation on that board. I guess, I think that the folks that we have on there are doing a great job of looking at the county as a whole. My point being though, I, I'm struggling to be able to respond to some constituents about what is the representation that District Five has on that, since that spot is now currently being kind of held in abeyance until you calculate. This, this is the, I think it's the.
About the Catawba.
Yeah, I don't think we have. We don't have designated representation from the councils.
Director for the Catawba Nation attends every Economic Development meeting on a monthly basis, because that's something we talked about, and I know that they're actively involved now. Certainly, I don't think they have voting rights at this time, but they have attended every meeting. And one of the things we discussed at our meeting, and there were four council members, since we had two different committees kind of merging together to meet on this, was how we're going to merge from the current group to the next group. And that's part of why we're letting the Economic Development Board meet is to talk about how do you orderly move you from you're a sitting board member to, maybe you won't be a sitting board member very soon. And so we're going to hopefully get some feedback on that, and then the whole council can determine it. But I think, you know, from my perspective, District One's representative, if I have a representative as it sits there now, is the Tika K Chamber. Well, the Tika K Chamber, the Fort Mill Chamber, and it's part of the York County Regional Chamber will, will morph into only having one, one appointee, as opposed to having four, whatever they have now. And so certainly, District One's representation per se will, could theoretically decrease, but I think one of the things we all talked about at that meeting was the importance of putting business leaders. Didn't matter where you, where you live in York County. And in fact, this ordinance will have, have a provision that says, as long as you run a company in York County, you could live outside the county potentially to be, to be considered for appointment. The goal was to put the best people, no matter where they lived, on this committee so that they could go out and recruit. Certainly, it's something we can all debate, but I think you're going to see the draft when it comes out. It's going to look very similar to something like that, as opposed. when it comes out, it's going to look very similar to something like that, as opposed to any type of district representation.
Right. And let me be, let me be real clear about my concerns, because I think that, you know, District Five is a little bit different than the rest in order, and, and I do think that it's critical, and we can depend on folks who don't have, you know, a home base. We don't want to be district-centered, but I, but I think that when you have a district such as Five that doesn't have dedicated municipalities that have the chambers, but yet we have a tremendous amount of I-77 corridor on there that would help to have someone who's familiar with that area to be able to help drive what I think is one of the, one of the areas that has, we're going to surely see some, some tremendous boon. And I really would like for the, you guys to consider that when you're coming up with this development of that, to let's incorporate some of the businesses in that area so that they're, they have some familiarity with the area. That is how you get public support for things on the economic development. You have to have somebody there in that area that, that folks trust and know, that are rooted there.
And I think as it does explode in that future growth, that's going to pretty much be automatic.
And that's part of, you know, the, part of that new ordinance has, you know, we have a representation from a small business, a medium business, a large business, from a distributor, from our target industry, I mean, we, we're covering.
And target areas, I would assume.
So it'll be covered with that. Now, we're, we, we discussed, but we decided not to limit it to where we have to have somebody from District Three, you know, or a certain quota of number of people from District Three, because I've had concerns about the western part of the county. But we want to make sure that, you know, and I believe our staff and our Economic Development Board will do a good job with that. They're looking at the whole county. I mean, that, that's what they're doing, they're, they're having to, because we're running out of land in certain areas. So that was all part of what was discussed, and we tried to make sure that, that there is a broad representation in this new ordinance and, and again, active people that are not retirees and out of touch, but people that are still in those industries and know they're working and managing.
Well, I'm interested in seeing the, the recommendations that you have. It's not an easy job, because it's a fine line, you get the businesses, but then they have an investment and, and sometimes they have agendas. So being able to weed out that agenda, but getting folks who are, have the business mind in the, in the context to do that, I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing what your recommendations are.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes, and this may be nothing at all, but I, but I do, I thought about this, and I'm glad we talked about it a while, because it made me remember again. You know, there, there was a concern after we left the other night, you know, overall, and this would go to Mr. Kendry, do we have any concerns at all? And we may have touched on it, but I, I'd like to hear it again if we did. Did we touch on it at all about the possibility of the exclusion of folks that are not in the workforce? From a legal standpoint, is that an issue, any at all, or could be?
We haven't talked about that issue, certainly. Look at it.
Okay. Well, I, I, that, that concerns me, you know, and I sincerely mean that, gentlemen. I, I just would like to consider that, because, I mean, there, there are some rare fines out there. I mean, let's, let's face it, you know, folks that still have quite a bit to, to offer, but I'm just concerned about the legal aspect of it.
Okay, and, you know, it's, it's a real honor to have a lot of the CEOs and plant managers and stuff take part and help us grow, because once they're here, they've got their own business to look out after. But they're the minds that know what it takes to bring jobs here, so that's why we want to make sure we get the, the best, the brightest, the best minds involved to bring jobs here, no matter what district they're in, because it's all a common goal for the county. Next committees, Pennies for Progress Committee report, chairperson, Ms. Cox.
We held a meeting earlier this afternoon, we had a good discussion about and received update on the pennies projects. We discussed the need to identify lessons learned so that we can improve. There's always ways to improve, even though I consider our pennies program to be a feather and cap of the county. Some things that we discussed were to recommend, and maybe not a formal study, but an evaluation of the costs that we have incurred in doing the projects and see how they compare to other counties with those cost estimates, just to see if there's something that we're missing that we, that we can learn. We also discussed having prepared for our next meeting a report that includes, and Ron has done a great job of coming up with reporting schedule already, but we want to add some additional items to it to include the original estimate of the project, the actual cost of the project, the timeframe from approval to construction, and the reason for any cost overrun, so that we can determine how to, how to nip that in the bud if we can. The two issues that we constantly continue to hear from folks in the public is, why does it take so long to complete a project? We think that doing some of this analysis would help us get there, and why is the project costing more than what we estimated previously? Again, we think some of this analysis that we have done and that we'll talk about at the next pennies meeting will help us come up with some recommendations about how to improve the program and, and get us geared towards pennies for. We also talked about wanting some direction from the, the folks who are serving on our staff on the pennies projects for critical areas that we need, even though they don't make that decision, the commission makes that decision. It certainly can help to have some structure to how we present, in presenting all of the information to the commission that's formally adopted. And finally, we also discussed the composition of the commission. We are allowed to appoint three folks, and municipalities are allowed to, to appoint three individuals. We talked about what we would like to see and intend to have some more discussion on that at the next meeting, maybe come up with some recommendations of what the ideal person would look like. Obviously, we're looking for someone who could, folks who will be objective, who can look at the county as a whole, look at the critical needs and not be territorial, again, the same conversations that we're having, and come up with some, with some recommendations that we come back to the council to discuss. And there was one final, we asked, there were a couple of legal issues that came up, including we want to incorporate some maintenance aspects to it or a pothole, and that is going to be something that's going to require some legal maneuvering. And we wanted some advice from council about how we go about incorporating that to the next round of pennies and discussing funding and priority, prioritization of projects, because we had some issues where there was a project that was approved in one pennies, and then it was added again to the following pennies in a different order, and there's a statutory question of interpretation as to how that should be working appropriately. So we asked our, our, our county attorney to help us figure those things out.
Thanks, Ms. Cox. Over the coming months, your committee's going to be extremely important for the welfare of York County. Finance and Operations, Mr. Johnson?
Finance and Operations Committee met tonight and approved Brian Davis for the Rock Hill York County CBB from District Five. We approved Robert Walker for the York County Forever District Five. We approved James Duncan for the Cultural and Heritage Commission from District Three. We deferred on the ex officio position until the next meeting, as we had received two extra applications that came in after our agenda was published, so we, we have to wait to consider them. We then approved Frederica Alley for the Bethel Fire District Board. We also discussed in our committee that, beginning in January, we'd like to start taking a look at all of our boards and commissions and their makeup and trying to make a determination of what boards and commissions are actually meeting, what are they doing, what ways can we help improve that format, do we need to change the composition, do we need to just say some boards and commissions don't ever meet, do they need to exist per se? Certainly, the state mandates that we keep certain things up at all times, and we will follow those laws. And we also would like to take a harder look at a conflicts of interest provision in which if you're going to sit on a board or commission, that you have to fully disclose any conflicts you may have or that could arise, so that there are no questions regarding the integrity of those who sit on these boards.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next item is, I'm sure there's probably no council member that has any comments, but we've got council member new non-agenda comments. Any council member have any comments?
Unfortunately, I do have one. I, I was real excited to hear Kerry give his report tonight, to see us move towards the offensive side of, of our museum program. One thing that I really think we ought to consider is, in our winding down, to maybe authorize the, the firm that helped us through the litigation process to suggest to us some very specific parameters. I mean, this is to me something they were intimately involved with. Mr. Autry is obviously very, very well informed about this issue, and, and we talked about this at one of the meetings. I would like for him to suggest to us ways to incorporate some, certain policies that would prevent issues like this maybe arising again, and I would like council to figure that, and let's authorize that. Because we need to learn from those mistakes and try to, try to prevent them from happening again.
Mr. Kendry, can you do a little research?
Be happy to contact him on that point.
Okay. Any other council member, yes, or Mr. Henderson?
This is slightly different, but it's in that, it's in the same room with that. You know, I, I would hope that, it's good to have a vision, without the vision, the people will perish. That's what the Good Book says. So it's, it's a good thing to see the enthusiasm and, and us moving forward like Council Cox was, Council Lady Cox was saying, and, but I would hope that there's a lot of consideration for the old Bratton's home out there, along with the old homestead, because it's in, the, the foundation out there for the old homestead is in very, very bad shape, and I hope that we'll take care of what we've got first, before we move forward with something very brand-new that's going to create a lot more expenses in, in the future and reoccurring expenses. I'd like that to really be considered in this, and I hope they will. And I also, like I said, the reoccurring expenses and growing that budget concerns me, once we run out of this, this additional money. And I would like to know overall, in comparison to the whole budget, how much is tax, tax-sponsored? Because I would really, like, you know, when, when many of us come aboard some years back, we were considering and really felt like that more private money should be, be involved, because usually things are operated better when you have private sector money, and even some outside sources that have been even somewhat surprised at how, the, the high rate that's, that's public money that's involved here. So I hope we will consider several different ways of being active with the public to where we can lower this amount. If it's somewhere close to eighty percent, I hope we will lower that to where there can be more private sector money or private donations and contributions involved, because it, because it helps keep everything running better, more efficient, especially when it comes to museums. You can look all across the country, and, and you can see that it serves the people much better when there's, when there's quite a bit of private money coming in rather than public money.
Thank you, sir. Any further councilman comments, concerns, or being none? Do we have a motion for executive session?
Maybe we go into executive session to receive legal advice.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose no. We'll start in five to ten minutes. At that's the end of executive session, we have no action items, so if there's no further discussion, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I should adjourn.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned.